Good afternoon. I'm Senator Gary Daniels from District 11. Today, we'll be holding a meeting of the Senate Finance Committee. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As Chair of the Senate Finance Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and selected legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom or YouTube and via phone by following the directions and links provided on the General Court website. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting in the Senate calendar. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email remotesenate@leg.state.nh.us or call 603-271-6931. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states his or her presence, please also state where you are and if anyone else is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I will call the roll. Senator Morse.
Senator Chuck Morse, I'm in the Senate chambers.
Senator Hennessy. You're muted.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Erin Hennessy from Littleton. I am in an outdoor location in Maine, and there are many people nearby.
Senator Susie.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. I am at my home in Manchester currently, and I am alone. I will be switching over, however, to phone because I'm going to have to get in my car within about 45 minutes.
Thank you. Senator Reagan. Senator Geida?
Here.
Senator Rosenwald?
Cindy Rosenwald, I'm in the Senate chamber.
And I'm Senator Gary Daniels, and I am in the Senate chambers. I would now invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, I just noticed something on fiscal this morning that I thought was great. When they were adjourning, they just asked everybody to raise their hand. Might save two minutes.
It might. Then again, if we don't carry our deliberations out to the max, then we'll finish three minutes. Okay, we're going to start with the agencies that are on hold. And our first one will be the New Hampshire Retirement System. I had had a question on that. That question has been answered. It was really just in regards to the significant increase in the 2021 budget.
Chairman.
Senator Morse.
I move the New Hampshire Retirement System as presented by the House.
Senator Morse moves the figures in the HB2 as presented by the House. HB1 and 2, I guess. Senator Reagan, second. Senator Rosenwald.
I had a question about the letter, the email we all got this morning from Marty Carlin about Sections 14 and 15 of House Bill 2. And I'm not sure if Senator Morse's motion was only on House Bill 1.
That's how we've been doing it. Josh, can you bring up House Bill 2, 14 and 15?
Because he said that it was their concerns were being addressed in House Bill 130 through an amendment, but the Senate Committee recommends ITL on that bill. So I was just hoping we could get the retirement system to bring us up to date on that and what we would have to do with those two sections.
I think the intention was to go over House Bill 2 on Wednesday, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry I didn't hear.
That we will be taking up House Bill 2 on Wednesday?
Oh, okay. So strike that.
So we will take note of that to make sure that we do address it.
Thank you.
The motion before us of the House figures for the New Hampshire Retirement System, that has been seconded by Senator Reagan. Any further discussion?
Chairman. I'd be interested to know the answer to your question that you asked that was answered.
I'm sorry?
I'd be interested to know the answers to the question you asked to the retirement system. The major part of that was that there was a new system. Thank you.
Put in. Sing no further discussion. We'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy. Senator Hennessy, again. The volume's not coming through. I see you are unmuted. Try once again. Senator Hennessy votes yes. Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Motion carries, and the New Hampshire Retirement System figures have been adopted. Going on to the Treasury Department. Senator Morse.
I'd like to hold the Treasury Department so we work through the university system and community college system.
Okay. With no objection. It makes sense because it has to do with the university and the college system. Moving on to the Department of State. Again, I had questions here as to the number of increase. Let's get a motion on the table first. Is there a motion?
Right.
Senator Morse?
Yeah, I'll move the House position on Department of State.
Okay. Senator Morse moves the House position on Department of State. That's seconded by Senator Hennessy. Number one on the questions here, I had a question as to why the increase. It was really primarily for 2020. There were many more elections than normal, so there was kind of a natural blip in that. The second one, I questioned whether ROPA funds could be used to fund House Bill 516 relative to absentee ballots, and I don't know if I ever got to answer that question.
House Bill 516 did not make it out of the House at this point.
All right, so we don't have to worry about that. Any other action items that need to be placed? Senator Rosenwald?
Question, are we doing all of House Bill 2 next week? Or, okay, so we're not doing any amendments on any agencies today on House Bill 2?
We've been picking them up upstairs. We're listening as you speak. So I, if there's something that's changed in House Bill 2, like that we voted on normally, you know, like we could easily vote on 3 and 4 in a given day, we're picking them up. We're listening to you and picking them up so that when we present it back to you Wednesday, your votes are already in there. The only thing I would caution you, I agree with 3. I just, until we get House Bill 1 tied up a little tighter, I'm not sure about, and ways and means gets revenues finished, I don't know what to do with number 4, so.
So we're not doing them?
It's up to you. I think they could be done together. I mean, I support 3, and I support 4 in some fashion. I just want to make sure there's enough money.
Do you have any objection to holding off?
No.
To do 3 or 4 at the same time?
No, I'm just wondering whether I should not raise my hand all afternoon on House Bill 2 issues. It's really a process.
I think the answer is you can. We'll take those up, and actually, it will shorten the time later.
And sometimes we'll say we're going to hold it.
Yeah.
But Cindy, I think the problem is, to be honest with you, Senator Rosenwald, the problem is you're doing all the deleting, and I'm drafting as fast as I can, like on transitional housing.
I know.
I know you're deleting, or you're carrying it over, which I agree with you. So you have that in another document.
I know, and you have.
And I'm drafting a spend.
You sent me yesterday.
And I asked you if it was okay if we drafted it together.
Yes.
So that's what's happening with a lot of these things.
I'm happy to hold all this stuff. I just want to know what the Chair's preference is.
I think there are some we can probably take care of today. Others we may want to hold.
So you'll just tell me?
Oh, yeah, I'll be willing to entertain.
Okay, so I won't try to move 3?
Right. Okay, so we will go on to the Department of Labor. And we have one item on here.
Did we vote on House Bill 1 on Department of State?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We were going to hold. Oh, yeah, I guess we can do it on the House Bill 1. All right. Senator Morse?
I think we moved that to pass. Yes.
Okay. Senator Morse moves that we adopt the House figures on House Bill 1.
Second.
Second.
Second by Senator Hennessy. Any discussion? We'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have no problem voting on 3 today, knowing that I'm going to put money in that bucket depending on what everything looks like financially. So I just, the formula that's in 3, I don't agree with, and I've told Kenny Wilder that. So however you want to handle that.
I think I would just as soon hold off on it because I haven't made up my mind yet as to what the best way is. But I think it would be simple to take them up together. Okay, we'll go on to the Department of Labor. On House Bill 2 here, there was one amendment to delete Section 128. That's Amendment Number 1388-S. The contents of that were included in House Bill 261 that has now been signed by the Governor. So this is not needed.
But it is.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, we need to delete Section 128.
I move that to pass.
Senator Morse moves "ought to pass" on Number 1. That's seconded by Senator Hennessy. Discussion? There being none, we'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald? Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Is there a motion on the Department of Labor? Senator Rosenwald moves "ought to pass" on the Department of Labor. Is there a second?
I believe we've already approved this department, Mr. Chair.
Have we? Okay. Thank you for the update. Means we can go on to the next one. Just Public Employees Labor Relations Board.
Mr. Chair, I move "ought to pass."
Okay. Senator Hennessy moves "ought to pass." Is there a second?
Pages.
Second by Senator Reagan?
Page 10.
Thank you.
There being none. Call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald? Chair votes yes. PLRB has been approved. Going on to Military Affairs and Veterans Services. I'll move Item 1.
Is it Item 1 or Item 4? Because I'm just trying to think. It looks like you're going to move an amendment, right? Is that what it is?
I think they're comboed.
You want to move both?
We could. I think they're the same thing.
1 and 2.
1 and 4.
Well.
I don't even know if it's 4.
It's not really even 4. So moving Amendment 1512-S.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion. I did check on the increase on that. You have an explanation of what was there. There were a couple of things that contributed to this. The addition of Veterans Services that are now rolled into Military Affairs as well as community-based things. So that accounts for the increase that I had a question on. Senator Geida?
Yeah, was there a commensurate, maybe LBA can, was there a commensurate reduction in, was it HHS where that Veterans Services was housed, commensurate with the movement over to Military and Veterans Affairs?
Yes. Veteran Services was a small, separate department that got rolled into Military Affairs. So that went away, and their budget is now included in Military Affairs.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none, the motion is to approve Amendment 1512-S. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
And Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes, and the amendment has been adopted. Is there a motion on Military Affairs and Veterans Services?
So moved.
Moved by Senator Rosenwald to approve the House figures. Second by Senator Geida. Discussion? There being none. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Go on to the Department of Insurance. And is there, is there anyone on from the Department of Insurance?
Chairman, I'll move Amendment 1407-S for discussion.
Senator Morse moves Amendment 1407-S, seconded by Senator Reagan. Senator Morse, you're recognized.
I, if the Department's on, or LBA might be able to explain this one.
Yes, the House Bill 2 amendment changes two positions from classified positions to unclassified, and I believe we heard from the Commissioner that that was a recommendation from the Department of Administrative Services, Division of Personnel. There is no cost impact to House Bill 1 or 2.
Senator Morse?
Can I just follow up on that? So is there another position being dealt with beyond this? Another amendment being dealt with, or is this the only one?
There was a recent request, I believe it was a letter to members of the committee, to move a position from one accounting unit to another, which would be no fiscal impact either. Same source of funds, just moving the position from one account to another because they can't do that outside of the budget process.
Saying no further discussion. I'm looking for a letter because I received something from the Department of Insurance regarding, regarding something else they were looking for, but I don't know that it has anything to do with this. So saying no further discussion, the motion before us is the adoption of 1407-S. Call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Do you have that letter before you?
Okay. Actually, so they're requesting an amendment to House Bill 1. Said the Insurance Department would like to add another amendment to House Bill 1. Move classified position number 41777 from AU 2521, Fiscal Financial Exams into AU 2520
So move for discussion? LBA?
Motion by Senator Morse to move this classified position. Is there a second? Second to Rosenwald? Senator Rosenwald, LBA?
Yes. Question is regarding.
What are we doing, and are we spending any money?
Not spending any money. It's zero net change, moving a position from one accounting unit to another in the Department of Insurance. No general fund impacted whatsoever.
It states that the Department requests this change in order to support the functions of our premium tax unit. Any further discussion? Seeing none. The motion before us is to approve that request. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Is there a motion on the Department of Insurance? Senator Rosenwald moves the House figures on the Department of Insurance with the changes that we have approved, seconded by Senator Reagan. Any further discussion? There being none. We'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, and the motion carries. My next one is the Veterans Home.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move Number 2.
Senator Hennessy moves Number 2. Seconded by Senator Reagan. Just for clarification, are you moving to delete Sections 112 and 113? Discussion? The notation is that we don't need those sections because it's stupid language found in Section 110. Saying no further discussion, we'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. I'd like to move Number 1, Amendment 131-S, 1317-S.
Senator Rosenwald moves Amendment 1317-S. It is recognized to speak.
Thank you.
Was there a second? I'm sorry.
This is a.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Senator Susie.
This is a section of Senate Bill 132, which was adopted by the Senate twice, 24 to 0, then laid on the table as is customary, and it seeks a $250,000 appropriation from federal relief funds to hire an outside consultant to examine our infection control practices, both in the Veterans Home, where we lost about 20% of the residents in two-month period, and in our nursing homes generally. It's a quick study report due by November 1st. But I want to take that part off the table. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Senator Morse?
Yeah, I'd like to pick this up in the American Rescue Fund meetings that we've been having because I think we could fund it out of that money and not fund the other ones, so.
Okay. Seeing none, the motion before us is Amendment 1317-S. If you're in favor of that, you vote yes. If not, you vote no. Senator Morse?
No.
Senator Hennessy?
No.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
No.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And chair votes no. And motion, motion fails two to five. Is there a motion regarding the Veterans Home budget?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Senator Morse to approve the Veterans Home budget, that's seconded by Senator Geida. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call roll, Senator Morse? Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries. Going on to the Lottery Commission. Senator Morse?
I move item number one.
Senator Morse moves item number one. Is there a second? Seconded by Senator Reagan. Discussion. Senator Morse?
The, um, in item one, we'd be taking funds in twenty twenty one, which Lottery's doing well. Paying off their debt, and then the Senate would pick up, um, the fact that they don't have to pay debt service in twenty two and twenty three. So their debt's two point seven five million. We have enough money to do it, and we make a savings in twenty two and twenty three of four hundred thousand.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries, and number one has been adopted. Move item four. Senator Geida moves item four, which is Amendment one five zero four S, that is seconded by Senator Reagan. Discussion. Senator Geida?
Sure. What this does, it takes the how, the language out of House Bill two contingent on six twenty six being signed. It's waiting signature, one signature in the House to go then over to the governor, have it signed, and then there'll be amendment to change the date for qualification to May one of twenty twenty one.
Would you repeat that, please?
Senator Geida, can you?
No, sorry.
So the amendment would, would take the six twenty six language out of House Bill two upon its signature into law by the governor, which is awaiting one signature in the House, and then off to the governor's desk. And at the end, will then amend, will be an amendment that changes the effective date, I'm sorry, that changes the qualification date for facilities to May one of twenty twenty one, instead of the current May one of twenty twenty, and that the bill has moved forward a year because of the COVID.
Further discussion?
Just a question, has House Bill six twenty six been, been signed? Or?
What's, what's the status of?
It's, it's waiting, uh, one and one signature enrollee, I think, in the House, and then off to the governor's desk. That's why it says contingent on signature. So if it doesn't get signed, we want it in the House Bill two. It's only, it's a procedural thing, but there's a timing issue here, that's all.
Mr. Chair, could I clarify something real quick? So House Bill six twenty six is on its way to the governor's office for signature. This amendment here, uh, ones, one five zero four S, just deletes those sections. Senator Geida will have another amendment that changes that date of qualification that he refers to. That is not part of this amendment that's on this recap as number four. That would be a separate amendment that at this point, we probably would take up next week after a little bit more time passes with six twenty six's process.
Thank you for that.
So just a question, if, if for some reason the governor vetoes House Bill six twenty six, we'd have to put it back into House Bill two?
If it was the position of the Finance Committee, and if six twenty six failed, you could keep it in House Bill two, yes. So this, this amendment here, the way that this motion would be drafted is, it would come out of House Bill two contingent upon House Bill six twenty six becoming law first.
So if six twenty six does not become law, it will remain?
Correct.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald? The chair votes yes, and motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move item number two against any accounting that's been presented.
Senator Morse moves item number two. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Senator Hennessy. This, this adds four positions. In, uh, this is, we understand that there is no money in the budget right now. That, um,
Probably reduce the revenues, and there's nothing to account for. Good luck when you vote on that one.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Susie? Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. I did, I did ask about the increase in the budget. That was primarily because Keno came into being, sports betting came into being, and, uh, increase in personnel cost.
Chairman?
Senator Morse?
I move Amendment fourteen fourteen S.
Senator Morse moves Amendment fourteen fourteen S. Seconded by Senator Reagan. This reduces the Keno license from five hundred per year to one hundred. Uh, impact not expected to affect the Lottery Commission's estimated transfer to the Education Trust Fund. Any discussion? Seeing none, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
No.
Senator, Senator Daniels votes yes. The motion carries six to one. Any?
Chairman?
Senator Morse?
Yeah. In fairness, I don't know if a member voted in the wrong direction, but, um, having voted on the prevailing side, if you want to reconsider our vote. Speak up, Donna. Do you want me to reconsider the vote?
Um, it, it's not going to affect the outcome, but yes, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Senator Morse.
Okay, Senator Morse moves reconsideration of our previous vote. That, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Senator Geida. We'll call roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
No.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
No.
And chair votes yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The motion for reconsider, the motion for reconsideration passes five to two.
I just don't understand this amendment, so.
I move.
Yes, I
I move Amendment fourteen fourteen S.
Second. Motion by Senator Morse, seconded by Senator Geida to adopt Amendment fourteen fourteen S. Ready for the vote?
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How is this not an impact to the transfer to the Education Trust Fund? Does it simply mean less revenue to lottery? Or are we anticipating so many more locations that the overall amount will remain the same?
She may be looking at fourteen twelve instead of fourteen fourteen.
No, I'm looking at fourteen fourteen. It's a reduction from five hundred to a hundred dollars per year for a license fee.
We, we reached
Yeah, yeah, so how many?
There, there's approximately two hundred or so Keno operators, and with this decrease, I think the, the rough estimate would be eighty thousand a year, potentially of revenue. We did reach out to the Executive Director of Lottery Commission, and he said with it just being such a small amount, it probably wouldn't change the overall estimated transfer of lottery revenue that he anticipates for the biennium.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Motion before us is the adoption of Amendment fourteen fourteen S. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie?
No.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
No.
And the chair votes yes, and the motion carries five to two.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Morse?
I just, I know Ways and Means is voting next week on revenues. Item number two, I think they need to consider whether or not there was eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue was left on the table in the House, so.
I see Senator Geida taking note.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the department as, as passed. As amended.
Senator Hennessy moves the Lottery Commission with, with the adopted amendments. Seconded by Senator Reagan. Discussion. There being none, we'll call Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and the motion passes, and the Lottery Commission's budget has been adopted. Senator Morse?
Can we hold on the university system, the community college system, and the executive department?
Yes. Which means the next department up is the Department of Administrative Services. And we put, uh, number four on hold.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Geida?
I was informed on my drive down that the contract has been ratified by the employees. And I'm not sure whether that will impact any of these figures, but, uh, it might.
Mr. Chairman, we were just informed that upstairs, so we'll be bringing that in sometime next week.
Okay, so we'll keep number four on, on hold.
Well, number four. I don't think that affects what's going on here. I items one, two, and three, have we already adopted those?
No, not up till now. They have not been adopted.
They have not been adopted.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think what Senator Geida was talking about is a separate issue here. So I'll move items one, two, and three.
Second. Okay, Senator Morse moves items one, two, and three, a seconded by Senator Geida. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll call roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie? Senator Susie?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Those three sections have been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move item number eight. Basically, the House put in language that I don't think is workable with the Lakes Region facility. The, uh, language that the governor had in the budget is the language that I believe should be in there.
Okay. Senator Morse moves item number eight, which is Amendment one one four eight S, as seconded by Senator Hennessy.
Mr. Chair, may I clarify something?
Yeah, this amendment basically clarifies that it has nothing to do with the State Park, but I think there's a series of things to get us to where we have to be, so.
So be it.
Amendment number eleven forty eight makes it clear that, that Ahern State Park is not part of any, uh, proposed sale of the Lakes Region facility. There, there are other conversations concerning, um, the property and what the proper, uh, process is for disposing of it. But this particular amendment addresses the concerns that Ahern Park may be considered as part of that.
Like, as, as I understand it, uh, it's not included to begin with, but there is a perception by some that it is, so this amendment will clarify that it is not.
Belt and suspenders.
Right. Any further discussion of number eight? Seeing none, we'll call roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, who seconded that? Second, Senator Reagan? And roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Susie?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the motion was to not adopt this amendment?
No, the motion was to adopt it.
Okay, that's why I want clarification. Thank you. I vote yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Now the chair votes yes, and Amendment one one four eight has been adopted. Sir, Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. I am, I thought I had an amendment which I've seen, but it's not here, and maybe it's somewhere else, that puts into, back into House Bill two, a boilerplate amendment on laid off employees that was inadvertently left out of this year's House Bill two.
Yes, I believe, uh, we have a separate page. We didn't know if that was going to come up today or during the House Bill two discussions.
But it's about this department.
Yeah.
So to come up later.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have it, or it can come up with rest of the House Bill two discussion.
Okay.
Does that, does that amendment have a number on it yet?
I think it does, because I've seen it from all of us.
Yes, that would be Amendment number sixteen twenty three S.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Morse?
I'd move the Department of Administrative Services, because I believe anything else that's on four, five, six, um, will be dealt with in language that would come in in House Bill two if we're going to do anything.
Senator Morse moves the house figures for, for the Department of Administrative Services, that is with the amendments we have adopted. Is there a second? Senator Reagan, any discussion? Seeing none, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Susie? Senator Susie, I believe, is probably transferring over to her phone. Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and motion carries six zero. Next is the Department of Revenue Administration.
Mr. Chairman, I move item number one.
Senator Morse moves item number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Senator Hennessy seconds motion. Uh, this deletes the addition of two auditors. Discussion? Discussion? Senator Geida?
Yeah, I'm not certain that we are cutting our nose off in the sense we're looking down at $3.9 million in revenue for the, if we establish these two positions of additional revenue. And you know, as chairs tear away its means, I just wanted to make that comment.
Senator Morse?
Yeah, I believe what we heard was that there's a person being hired to fill an open position that they have right now as an auditor. I don't know who sat in on that meeting with me. Maybe LBA can clarify that, because they were probably there. And the the fact that the we go through this all the time, adding two auditors, in my opinion, at this time, with the way business is trying to come out of the pandemic, I think it's a mistake.
Thank you. No, as LBA wished to add?
I believe that is the case, that they have a vacant auditor that they can fill.
Further discussion? Seeing none. We'll call roll, Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie is? Senator Susie? You're muted? It's at star six to one. There we go. Senator Susie, the motion before us is the deletion of, to delete the addition of two auditors in the Revenue Administration. Senator Susie? I believe it sounds like she can't hear us at this time. Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
No.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries five to one.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Morse?
I don't think item two will be needed. Item three, I would move Amendment 1246.
Second.
Senator Morse moves item number three, that's Amendment 1246, which deletes the singles, single sales factor delay. That's seconded by Senator Rosenwald. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie? Still not with us. Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes six zero. Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. These next four items are amendments of mine, and I wonder if we could hold them, because I'm guessing I won't get a second if Senator Susie is not on.
With no objection. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, I move.
Senator Morse?
I think Yaron was going to do it, so.
Okay, recognize Senator Hennessy for a motion.
I, thank you. I move the Department of Revenue as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Senator Morse. Any discussion? There being none, you're voting on the Department of Revenue Administration figures as amended. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie? Still not with us. Senator Reagan? Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries six zero.
Chairman?
Senator Morse?
Can we hold Department of Employment Security until I get my answers back? And the Department of Agriculture and Markets and Food, who I need to clarify whether it's $550,000 a year they need in spending. I'd like to hold those two.
So we'll hold Department of Employment Security and Agriculture, which will take us to the Department of Safety.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Morse?
LBA's been working on a document with Senator De La Sandro. Hey, I don't have it, so if they have it.
It should be at everyone's desk.
There was one that was handed out today.
Okay. So let me ask LBA a question. If I look at the summary description in the top corner, does it come out to exactly $5 million in '22 and $5 million in '23?
Within rounding a couple dollars, it does. I have the backup. When we keyed into the system, it may be one or $2 here or there, but the department got it to round at $5 million per year of total funds.
This is a separate document? I know it.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Morse?
Yeah. I spoke with the governor's office, and the department presented us $20 million, $10 million a year in add backs. So I went to the governor's office to ask him what happened during the budget phase. And Matt told me that the this budget was scrutinized pretty hard, and we should take a look at some of these add backs. The add backs that they're trying to put back, if you look at the civilian positions, the, it really does make sense that they put those back first. I believe there were 23 trooper positions that are not shown here. I don't know if those, are those four sworn positions, troopers?
I believe so, yes.
So they asked for 23, and now they're asking for four.
I believe there's four that start in '22, and then six more that start in '23. If you look on page five of this, you'll see the breakout of the state police positions. They appear, I believe, starting at number 41 down through 46. And I'm not sure if that's, there's got to be a couple elsewhere in this document as well.
And the current amount of positions that are in the budget, there was 355 minus the 23? Is that what it was?
I'd have to defer to the department on those numbers. I don't know if you wanted to invite Steve Lavoy in to answer those specifics. I don't have that with me up here.
I don't have that document with me either. But that's what I thought I read, that there were 355 authorized positions, and 23 of them coming out of the governor's budget weren't filled. Yeah, I think you better put them on so I can ask the question.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lavoy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Steve Lavoy, Director of Administration. Senator Morse, there are 378 authorized sworn positions, and there were 23 that were unfunded, which gets us to our 355 authorized and funded within the House version of the budget.
So I got the 355 right, but in the wrong direction. The, so 378 is what you had in the last budget?
378 is what we had. As far as funded goes, no, 355 were in the last budget. 378 were funded several biennium ago. And there were positions that were unfunded several biennium ago that we've been carrying as unfunded positions and trying to fund since that time.
So where will you be compared to the last budget with troopers if we pass this amendment?
We would be at three, at 401, because we'd be adding six troopers in total. It would actually be six troopers in total, not 401. Would actually be at three, I'm sorry, 359 in year one in '22. And then we would be at 361 in FY '23, because there are two more positions that are added only in the second year.
Okay, I guess I need clarification. I got lost in the math. You currently have 378 authorized.
Authorized, but not correct, authorized.
Okay. What is the 23?
Those are unfunded positions, so they're authorized but unfunded, which gets to 355.
Okay, got it. Then you want to put in four in '22 and six, no.
Four in '22 and two more.
And two more in '22.
Four in '22 and two in '23. Discussion? Senator Geida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for purposes of discussion, are the unfunded, I'm sorry, are the vacant positions vacant because we can't find applicants or because they're not funded? Am I saying that right?
Our current vacant positions are vacant because of timing. We're starting to find applicants, but because of the hiring freeze, there's been a delay. And with state police troopers, with new troopers who need to attend the academy, there's really only three points of entry throughout the year. So those vacancies for our currently funded positions are declining with each new academy class.
Thank you.
I think the questions that we really want to know there, though, is you have 355 funded positions, right? How many of those are full? How many are vacant?
So right now, I believe, 41 are vacant. And I would, I would, which is a large number. But I, again, the reason for that was the hiring freeze during COVID. And we are in the process of recovering those and filling those vacancies with the intention of recovering all of those over the next biennium.
So was there any time in the last five years that you were completely filled?
No.
We, within the last five years, no. We average one and a half retirements a month from the force. So at no point are we ever at zero. Usually, our target vacancies would be in the single digits, the high single digits typically, seven or eight positions. Again, because we can't hire new people until an academy comes forward.
Thank you. Senator Morse?
Chairman, I'm wondering if what we should do on the troopers is move the four to 2023. Because hiring 41 in this budget right now is going to be difficult. If we try to beef it up in '23, put four into that year, I'm not sure what that does for an adjustment for us. But the, it just, I don't think it's logical that we're going to get 41 and four hired right now.
I guess I would agree with the statement on the hiring and with 41 vacant. I think at this point in time, I would, I would be reluctant to add to that until they have the vacancies filled.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I make a comment? The four positions in FY '22 are leadership roles within the department, and they provide a level of oversight and management that is currently currently lacking and help us to achieve some of the recommendations related to the LIET Commission. So those positions would not be new hires, but would be promotions from within the existing force. To your point, it would create an additional four vacancies at the trooper level as the promotions work their way up. But there isn't an immediate need and an ability to immediately fill those specific positions. The two positions in FY '23 are new positions.
Okay, Senator Geida?
How long have those leadership positions, Steve, been vacant?
Since, I believe it was 2010, when the big reduction occurred.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Senator Morse?
Mr. Chairman, can we put this on hold till Monday?
Yes. We'll put the Department of Safety on hold. Go on to the parole board.
What page was that?
Yeah, I got it. Last ones for safety planned this year.
So the only thing that we haven't taken action on is Amendment 1430, if it is the desire.
I'll move that.
Moved by Senator Rosenwald, seconded by Senator Geida. Discussion? Senator Geida?
I do have one question perhaps. Obviously, the board chair can't report to the commissioner corrections, but I think that Senator Morse said they report directly to the governor.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I said, don't make it the Senate President and the Speaker.
Have a note that the chair should report to the governor. Yes, Senator Rosenwald and Geida. Any further discussion? Amendment 1430 S. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Susie there?
Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt. This is Kevin Ripple with the LBA. When Senator Susie switched over to her phone, we weren't sure which number to bring over. So Senator Susie, if you're on the call, if you could press star nine to raise your hand, we can bring you over.
I feel like I'm in Boston Garden.
Okay, here we go.
I would vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you, Senator Susie. Good to hear your voice.
I do apologize.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion on the parole board?
I'll move it, the House numbers as amended.
It says it was approved already, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, HB one was, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll unmove.
We'll go on to the Department of Justice.
I would move item number 11.
1101?
Senator Rosenwald moves item number?
11.
Eleven.
Eleven.
That's a great item.
Yeah, I thought I had this one ready.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Senator Gaida. Discussion. Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. These, um, the child advocacy, um, centers that are operated by the Granite State Children's Alliance do amazing work with, um, how they approach children who have been abused or neglected and sometimes violently assaulted. If you haven't been to visit one, I recommend them highly. And Senator Daniels, we have a great one in Nashua. I know they'd be happy to have you come and tour it. They're, they're really amazing in how they compassionately work with young children who are so vulnerable.
Thank you. Further discussion? Motion before us is the adoption of item number eleven, uh, which is an amendment to fund the Granite State Children's Alliance. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yeah.
Senator Susie.
Yeah.
Senator Reagan.
Yes.
Senator Gaida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Chairman, move items five, six, and seven.
Senator Gaida moves items five, six, and seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Senator Rosenwald. Item number five is a da- data entry error, a correction for that. Uh, number six transfers five positions and eliminates an unneeded accounting unit. And number seven moves an appropriation between class lines to segregate general and federal funds. So it's pretty much housekeeping. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yeah.
Senator Susie. Senator Susie.
Senator Ripple, you might get it.
Yes, sorry. This is Kevin Ripple again. I think we've, we appear to have lost her number. Oh, no, that is.
Yep. I am here. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Senator Reagan. Senator Gaida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries, and five, six, and seven have been adopted. Is there anything further the committee wishes to take up?
Is it item eight?
Senator Gaida moves items, which number, sir?
Eight.
Number eight.
Second.
And that's seconded by Senator Morse, uh, to request to budget the transfer of a position from DHHS to Justice. Uh, this would include HB two language to convert the position from a classified position to an unclassified assistant attorney position. Uh, the position will be funded with, by a transfer from DHHS to Justice. Any discussion? Seeing none, call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yeah.
Senator Susie.
Yeah.
Senator Reagan. Senator Gaida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Chairman.
Senator Morse.
I move item number ten.
Senator Morse moves item number ten.
Second.
With, and that's seconded by Senator Rosenwald. This is an amendment to restore funds to the media power youth program. Discussion. Seeing none. Call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yes.
Senator Susie.
Yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Gaida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Senator Morse.
I'll move item number one.
Second.
Senator, Senator Morse moves item number one, and that's seconded by Senator Gaida. Item number one requests a new attorney position and to restore funding for a legal secretary three. Discussion. Senator Gaida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is for a attorney position in the Election Law Unit. Currently, we have one attorney assigned, and, uh, clearly that seems not to be enough.
I give further discussion. Seeing none, we'll call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yeah.
Senator Susie.
Yeah.
Senator Reagan. Senator Gaida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes. Motion carries. Six to one.
Mr. Chairman.
Senator Morse.
I move the, uh, Department of Justice.
Second.
Senator Morse moves the, the budget for the id- for the Department of Justice with amendments. That's seconded by Senator Gaida. Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I had my hand up because I wanted to move item number two.
You.
I can withdraw my motion, but I'm not supporting item two, three, or four, so.
Okay. Uh, Senator Morse withdraws his amendment, uh, excuse me, his motion. Uh, chair recognizes Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. I would move item number two.
Is there a second?
I would second that motion.
Okay, sent by Senator.
This is Senator Susie.
By Senator Susie. Uh, this is a request for a new attorney position for multi-state litigation. Discussion. Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. Um, I think this important bureau has been under-resourced since I've been in the legislature for sixteen years, and we've seen litigation in the civil bureau get extremely complicated. Um, and I think it is worth it on behalf of consumers in New Hampshire. I can count, so I know where it's going, but I think it's important.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, the motion before us is the adoption of item number two. Call roll. Senator Morse.
No.
Senator Hennessy.
No.
Senator Susie.
Yeah.
Senator Reagan. Senator Gaida.
No.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
The chair will vote no. Motion fails two to five.
Thank you.
Well, sec- except Senator Morse's, uh, motion to approve the Department of Justice unless you had others.
Second. Oh, is there somebody else there? Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I was asking, does anyone have any other action? Any, move, move anything else before we take up the department? Okay, not hearing anything, I will accept Senator Morse's motion to approve the Department of Justice as amended. That's seconded by Senator Gaida. Discussion. There being none, call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yeah.
Senator Susie.
Yeah.
Senator Reagan. Senator Gaida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Senator Morse.
The, uh, after listening to you, um, I would move item one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven in Department of Information Technology.
Okay, Senator Morse moves all items in, I'm, I'm sorry, you said where?
DOIT.
DOIT, okay. Senator Morse moves items one through seven in the Department of Information Technology. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Senator Rosa Wall. Discussion. No discussion? Okay, are we ready for the vote?
I do have one question.
One question. Senator Gaida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I'm looking at item six, it says fund twelve of the thirteen remaining unfunded shared service positions and allocate the source of funds accordingly. Four were previously funded, one will remain unfunded. So we are adding eight more funded positions.
Sorry, what item are you looking at?
Item six.
Six.
I would ask LBA to explain all of this.
Yes, thank you. Number six would fund twelve positions that were unfunded by the agency to meet their, um, assigned target.
Thank you.
I think you have one question, Senator Gaida.
Yes, it said four were previously funded.
Yes, that, the House funded four of the positions.
So why previously, then, did they don't, you mean like last year and the year before, and they mean just by the House?
No, that, the twelve are the remaining unfunded positions. There are actually, uh, seventeen, I believe. The House restored funding for four, and this item would restore funding for the twelve of the remaining positions. Item seven is the last, uh, unfunded position. Just happens to be in a different account.
So to understand then, that the twelve, or that those thirteen unfunded pers- unfunded positions were previously funded, but to meet their target, they unfunded them.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just a question, if, uh, see, on items three and four have to do with licenses and, and insurance costs, uh, what happens if those are not? They, would they need to find the money within their budget over that? I presume that we would not go without insurance?
Well, I think the nature of their budget is, um, they're funded by all the other agencies in the service, the services they provide. So if the insurance was not funded, they would either purchase less and expose risk in those areas or, um, have to reduce some other service that they're already providing.
And going, going back to nu- number six, uh, just the note below where it says see about. Are we talking about about how far above?
So number six is split between general funds on the top row, and that C above is just to kind of tie those two together. That's the other and federal funds for the same, same action. So six has a general fund line and then a other, other and federal fund line.
And you define what networks switches are?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Uh, what, what, and number five, what are network switches?
I can give you a non-technical, uh, answer. It's part of the infrastructure that all the state agencies need to communicate access, um, internet, email.
And do we know if these items have been presented to the House or not?
I think these are additional items not funded by the House. I'd have to go back and look at the House presentation. I believe we have a commissioner available, um, if you'd like to hear it directly from the department.
Yeah, if we could, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Um, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, Dennis.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the record, Dennis Goulet, Commissioner of the Department of Information Technology. I heard two questions, I think. Um, one was around whether those items, an item in question, the network switches, and the other were in the, uh, requested at the House level. They were as well. We, we pulled those out, uh, during the governor's phase to make our target. Um, and we'll, um, and we did ask for them back in the House phase as well, and so we didn't add them during this phase. Uh, in fact, I don't believe we added anything new during the Senate phase. Um, and going back to the specific question about networks, which is, I think LBA did a great job of explaining. It is part of our core infrastructure that we would run the, um, state with, and we would indeed have to scrounge elsewhere to make this happen. We're not exactly sure how we would do that at this point. Uh, but we were really, in that particular area of shared services, we were really, um, digging pretty deep to get our general funds target during, during the governor's phase.
Thank you. And what was, do you have an idea what the expectation of the House was in not approving things like insurance and licenses?
Well, the, the insurance was a developing thing, and that insurance is actually not the total insurance, uh, cyber insurance cost. It's the estimated increase year over year. Um, the, as you, as you might guess, since the liability, cyber liability is increasing a lot, our carriers are telling us to expect an increase. So we originally budgeted a, a lower amount in the House phase. So I actually incorrect in saying I didn't ask for anything more in this phase. Uh, we originally budgeted a lower amount, which is in the budget now, and this is the, uh, the anticipated additional amount. We're going through the renewal process now, which is fairly lengthy. We have to establish what our cyber posture is and what we're doing well and what they think we're not doing well, so they can set their rates. But everybody's cyber insurance, uh, particularly state governments and, uh, entities that are targeted are going up quite a lot. And as I testified during the, our earlier testimony, we are evaluating this program right now to, to make sure that we really are spending the money in the, in the smartest way possible. Um, so this, this represents our knowledge, the best that we have it now. Within two or three months, we're going to have much better knowledge, so there's a bit of a timing issue right, right now on this.
I thank you. I guess one final question. Are any of these items at a higher priority for you than things that have already been adopted for the budget?
No, sir, Mr. Chair. We, we, um, we would not change our prioritization at this time. We, we left the absolute musts in, um, during the, during the governor's phase, and I wouldn't, um, reprioritize it this time.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? That there being none, uh, we'll call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Motion, I'm sorry, motion before us is, is to approve items one through seven. Um, Senator Morse has voted yes. Senator Hennessy.
Yeah.
Senator Susie.
Yeah.
Senator Reagan.
Yes.
Senator Gaida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair votes no. Motion carries six to one.
Mr. Chair, I move the Department of Information Technology as amended.
Second.
Senator Morse, Senator Hennessy moves the Department of Information Technology as amended. That's seconded by Senator Gaida. Further discussion? Seeing none, Senator. Seeing none, Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yes.
Senator Susie.
Yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And chair votes no. Motion carries, six to one. Go on to the Department of Corrections.
Chairman.
Senator Morse.
Item number four, I drafted language for Wednesday for House Bill 2. So beyond that, I'd move the Department of Corrections.
Senator Morse moves the Department of Corrections budget as presented by the House. That's seconded by Senator Hennessy. Any discussion? Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. Just... My memory is that we already took the vote on item number one. So it already lost? Am I right? Or did I dream this? I thought that we did discuss it last week when we first took up the department to fund the six teachers.
I have the same memory.
Okay. So we've already tried that, so... Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion before us is the adoption of the Department of Corrections budget. Call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yes.
Senator Susie.
Yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guida. Yes. Senator Rosenwald.
No.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries, six to one. Senator Morse.
I'll move item number two.
Senator Morse moves item number two.
Second.
Seconded by Senator Guida. There being none. This is a request to change the source of funds for an existing administrative four position from federal to general. The total net... The total funds net zero. Seeing no further discussion, call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yes.
Senator Susie.
Yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Chairman.
Senator Morse.
I remember we went through a long discussion the other day about which items could go to fiscal and not go to fiscal. Item number six, LBA is saying needs to be done by us in order to establish a position for the future. I'd move item six.
Okay, so Senator Morse moves item number six.
Second.
That's seconded by Senator Guida. This is a request to establish a new accounting unit for the consolidation of ESEA admin to move one existing position into it, so net zero. Total funds change. Seeing none, call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy.
Yes.
Senator Susie.
Yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries. We did vote before, and we had voted and accepted item number three, and that four, five, and seven now could go before fiscal.
Four, five, and seven can go before.
Four, five, and seven. Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. I'd like to move item number nine, because it's Friday afternoon. And I'm going to try to be like Senator Delasandro.
Senator Rosenwald moves item number nine, which is Amendment 1321. Is there a second on that?
I would second that.
Sentenced by... Seconded by Senator Susie. This extends the fiscal capacity disparity aid and additional aid based on free and reduced-priced eligible students through fiscal year 2023. Senator Morse.
Mr. Chairman, I would vote in against Senator Rosenwald's Delasandro's amendment, but I believe we're going to have to deal with all these changes in education funding on Wednesday next week. I believe meetings are happening to find out what we need to, in order to accept federal money that's coming into the state. We have to meet some levels. We're going through all that, which we're not... We're not ready for. So anyhow, I won't be supporting the disparities.
Okay, anything further? Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. I understand this as a large price tag, but I think we need to hold our communities harmless, and the free and reduced aid is very important. In addition, the fiscal disparity aid helps the communities that most need it. It's all been said before, so I don't think I need to spend a long time saving it, saying it, but I hope we all have a great American day.
Senator Delasandro would be proud of you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Senator Susie. Oh, I'm sorry. Senator Hennessy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to... Senator Morse is pouring. I have a meeting with the department and with the governor's office on Monday to work on this formula.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. The motion before us is the adoption of item number nine. Senator Morse.
No.
Senator Hennessy.
No.
Senator Susie.
A great American, yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guida?
No.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the chair votes no. Motion fails, two to five.
Mr. Chairman.
Senator Morse.
I move the Department of Education.
Senator Morse moves the Department of Education with amendments. Is there a second? Seconded by Senator Guida. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call roll. Senator Morse.
Yes.
Yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
No.
Senator Susie.
Yes. Sorry, no. I'm voting no. I'm sorry, I was unable to connect.
That's okay. Chair votes yes. I know that we have some things for Health and Human Services on hold for Monday. Are there... Any divisions that we can take up? On hold for everything?
Mr. Ripple might be able to answer that, and I think he's listening.
Yep, I'm right here. We do have items on hold for HHS. I didn't think they were going to come up today, but I have a packet that I can bring over in about... I can be there for about one minute, and we can hand those out and get started if you'd like.
Are there items in each division that are on hold?
There are items in every division, yes.
Just put this off till Monday, then. That way, you don't have to worry about coming over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Senator Guida.
Just adjourned.
That's a yes.
I can't see Senator Susie. She's on the phone. Okay, thank you. Okay, and the rest of them have hands up, so we are adjourned.